President, following the. Dispatch of the planning board meeting for August eighth, the quarter. Our first quarter business of the public hearing. The proposed changes to the fourth and public ordinance. I'd publish and hand over the plan for members who will have anything to say. I love these public hearings. I'm glad to see public hearings. The changes were extremely minor. Next order of business, you move over minutes, July fifth. Results as friend. Last two seconds, any comment, directions? All of them better. Major in the last, last one. Don't have fishing sword farm here. You get you kind of the fun table because that might come up there to turn. And your name.
Philip Patkinson. For synergy power. ATK, yes, man. Thank you. We've got some additional maps. We might have more of the public names. Congratulations, by the way, on getting your airport in it looks lovely.
By the way, folks, I know that air conditioner is based here in a part. If you've been here, well, not.
It's gonna start almost, Sam. Next, next. Yeah, we would be starting with the southernmost. Singular section. And blasting that. Yes, getting that down to approximately two, three feet below the grade we need. And then coming back and filling that in lifts, compacting and grading as we go.
As far as finding words part of the process. We do not watch.
The, you mean the butters? Yes, sir, that's been done by the, by the blasting company itself, not me or relatives.
Precise locations of us.
Yeah, how price precise is precise?
I think that's.
What, what? I'm sorry.
Handheld GPS.
Handheld GPS. Yes. So I'm taking everybody to drinks like you said.
I'll make the most of all. I'll make the motion and accept this. Providing a proper map is something that the G O locations. Is this isn't near anybody. A lot is notified. I don't see any reason to have to hold them up for another day. No, it's up to you to get, get it back to the office with this map with the G O locations on. With that, I think the most important. And in fact, even.
With, with the addition of the abutment butter to, 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 okay, action. All right, thank you very much.
I'm good.
We're going on.
Want us to set up up here or probably into this? They want there good?
Yes.
Yeah. Put a, put a, what, what, where you want to use our, to consider. Sounds great. Give us a second to set up.
This is a new point.
Thanks for, thanks for having us again here tonight, appreciate that. So I'm Eric Doobie with petroleum engineering group and Fred is with Optimus Senior Living. And. We basically have the submittal in front of me and they stand up and go through.
I'd also have the hour of following your voice.
So we came before you a few weeks ago and we were, I think we talked about the project and then all the, or some of the hurdles that we had to, had to go through. And I think what we got here and I think we're pretty close before, but introduction. For people that aren't familiar, this is the, the old primary school site. With two entrances off of Gardner Road. We do have the existing building complex, complex that we're showing on, on the existing site plan. Parking areas, storm drainage, all the utilities and, and so on. Because this project is. Got a lot of things going on with it, we actually did a demolition plan. For the contractor that we're going to be using. We're planning on demoing that area, the parking area and roadways. That are adjacent to Gardner Road. We're going to keep the parking area essentially. On the southeast side of the site. And we are keeping the existing roadways, although we're showing that we're moving some pavements. And, and then of course, the existing playgrounds. Will be removed and some other areas where things like that. The overall toes and you can see that from your set, we've broken it down into over the key point and broken it down into different areas. Because again, the area is so large. So showing that we're keeping, keeping the roadway and also making it more into a perimeter roadway. With keeping both entrances, not really doing a lot of regrading in here, just removing that parking area, keeping it the same. We are doing a building infill in, in the front section to be able to connect these two. Areas, we're doing a couple other infills where we just had some open areas on site. And those are shown by essentially the shading here. And then, as we mentioned a few weeks ago, we are doing a three story addition. That's out back and of course, it's going to be lower, so the scale should be good too. With this particular site and that's where we're picking up some bedrooms and we have the existing gym and then we have the, the maintenance area and delivery area. And then we're doing a small connector and then being able to connect to that new three story addition. We do, we are keeping deliveries over on essentially this north side of the building. And redoing the walkways, we're adding in some parking to the rear essentially of that three story addition. We have the hillside that, that comes down and we're basically going to be in there where. We'll, we'll recreate a ditch in here on this side, but we're basically in the area where the playground was, we're still flat before it goes out there and connects to that hillside. So we do have some parking that's near the, we've got some entrances in the main entrance here with a portico. Our porker share, be able to drop people off under weather and then be able to come back out. And then we're still utilizing this for just over overflow parking and an employee park. So with the drainage, and I think I, I mentioned here, we actually have a decrease in total impervious. By about 20,000 square feet, we're still doing some treatment, we have a couple options to be able to do treatment of storm water. In these areas where we're, before we basically interrupt that existing ditch. And whole system. So we want to provide a little bit of treatment on that. And. With regards to utilities. We're keeping the existing sewer and we have the pump station, the lift station, we're still working with the sewer department on doing a pump. Drawdown test here to see what we're going to be, with the flow which is going to be up at their pump station, town pump station. And so working with Bob Lawy and that known as we speak. And then we're keeping existing water line, existing water system for the site. And the same thing with power will be connecting to existing power that's on this north side and then, and then into the building on that. With regards to traffic, I mean, this wasn't still used, I know it was still used a few years ago, so. It hasn't seen that traffic flow that, that you used to have with that. But with the elderly care, it's really mostly employees and some visitors that are going to be there. So in reality, the traffic queue from the original primary school use is going to be lower than. In our proposed condition. So if that makes any sense, so. So. And then it's with regards to lighting. We're still working on, but most of it's going to be building mounted lighting, cutoff lighting, we're not going to have all those slower overspill into public carries or cross property. So. So that's what's happening on that side of it, so. So I think I've covered. Got covered most of it, we've got utilities. Pavement, we've got some storm water that we're talking about with, with these ponds, obviously we're gonna, we're gonna control that, do a reduced flow, even though in, in reality, we're still going to have. The reduced flow with storm water because the 20,000, which is essentially a half acre of reduced impervious that we're talking about, so. So I think that's the kind of a project in a nutshell, we'd be glad to go through checklist and, and hear your thoughts. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, the boundaries survey, we do have a boundary survey, we're trying to still locate it, I know the survey down the road here. Has a full stamped copy of that boundary survey, I just, I'm trying to get one piece, but right now we have it in print sheets on that, so. But I didn't want to mention that.
That's around, I think fifty, is it under?
I don't, you're talking about the footprint, are you talking about combined three stories?
Three stories, I think it's going to be about fifty six thousand. Yeah, it's going to be.
Yeah, yeah, roughly about that.
Yeah.
We've got the other infill areas that we're. That we're looking at for the, for the new building.
Are you familiar with the building? This area here is, there's a set of stairs off this parking lot and this is open to the courtyard. We're going to infill that and then these are two interior courtyards that have, they're like glass corridors on either side. We're going to remove those and change the roof line to. Die into the two roofs on either side of it and infill those areas. The, we're excited about the having in the enclosed courtyard because the. North side of the existing building and over across part of the front is going to be primarily memory care. So this will be, this will give that outside area. They can, you know, we can, yeah. Raise planting beds and stuff like that, but not a, not a, an issue where you have to worry about them wandering.
Yeah.
Morse Farm has expressed some interest in being involved in some way, they don't know. What possibly, but they're, you know, some, probably some assistance with what we're doing with the gardens and stuff. The only request they've made is that when the exterminators come in and do any treatment, bug treatment, we let them know so they can lock the bees up for the day. But they're pretty excited. About it, so I think it's going to make good neighbors.
My first question.
Dwelling units. They will have the third floor of the other building will have, and some of the others will have a kitchenette, not, none of them will have. A, a full kitchen like you would expect in an apartment. Everybody in the building gets at least. One meal and a continental breakfast and that is what we class by as. People that come in that. They, they still want a title of independent living. So the, the family, usually in that case, it's, it's a, it ends up being a. An ego issue for a lot of people, they don't, I'm not independent, I'm not an assisted living person yet. But the family. You know, moms let the tea kettle go dry three or four times and had some issues not taking her medication, but. You know, might be a fall risk. But it's still going to want to. Probably make herself lunch, so she's probably going to do a continental breakfast and then take the evening meal in the dining room. So all of our facilities in other states, that's the way we work it with what's independent, but it's not a, a residence that. Someone would choose to live here and not, it's, it's not price that they'd want to. That's a big part of it is the care.
Yeah. Too bad the same, but one stricter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what are we, so what are we talking about for kitchen units, Fred? Are we talking about microwave or we talk?
We're talking about a microwave and there might be a, a two burner. You know, counter, yeah, electric. Yeah.
Gotcha.
And if, you know, if somebody goes out to eat with the family, they come, they take mom out to eat, comes, she's got leftovers, wants to reheat them. Yeah. What we, what we do in most of the work, we have a unit called a mic that we buy, that's called a micro fridge. It's a small refrigerator, small freezer and the microwave is right on top of it. And the way it's set up now, they, they even put the, the. G F I breaker right in the unit, build it in as part of it, so the refrigerator plugs into the microwave. Microwave plugs into the wall, but it's got the G F I in that unit. We've been using those for about 20 years, but they've kind of evolved to what they have, they're, they're a nice unit. They also use them in college dorms and stuff like that, that they, it worked out well that way.
Not yet, where with the overlap of Emily leaving, you know, we're trying to, you know how that goes. So we'll, obviously we're going to do what needs to be done in, in terms of subdivision site plan and review as far as these.
What's the theme now?
I, I don't know, that's what, yeah, is there somebody that can help us out with that?
I just thought there'd be a little bit of confusion with.
Is that just new? No, it's going to be one of the big, the whole project.
Okay.
The zoo building, the old building, the cutouts that you're adding in. It's supposed to, so total square. I'm sorry. Driveways and sidewalks count as square feet.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. So is that it? Just square footage building, existing new driveways, sidewalks?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll just pay that the. The town right here, sounds good. Will do. Yeah.
General information, they have a name and address. Their location afterwards, I think, new six B, about their own, on dash lines. Or produce sketch map. Location now. However, registration numbers and seals. So that takes my, I have shared about six, section six. Section seven. Without source of this information prepared by the special master area of the recent founders. We ruled that six months.
Yeah, boundary survey. Okay, this is, this is an older survey, I can tell you that.
All right, so. We invite speed of thought, either then in the reissue the plan with a new date on it. Or write a letter, or looks at the letter saying that it's important, that the reported. Is so that.
Gotcha.
And some of these, I just did not have time for that. So you can tell them, do you have a location side, then we just consider one, and we'll. On a lot of property that's certain, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's on the P one hundred.
I don't have any wits.
Which for, I'm sorry.
Existence streets and breakaway.
I thought we did on the breakdown plans, but because.
So far, I have to see one side. So that gets, it gets common for the, it's got public view on the boundary survey.
Yeah, no, we need to add that, so why not the.
And ground floor elevations, or the system working on site, my boss, but your plan shows that.
You could add.
Did you show on there, Carl?
I think that shows and says that.
Yeah, so we showed the setback line, but it's not, it's not labeled though.
Okay, it should be labeled.
Yeah, it should be labeled. Yes.
I don't know if. Location of intersecting roads and the viability of the street, they got the other side of the street.
Yeah.
That was part of the, the, the. And I announced from here, that five two one is going across just the front block. I know. He's not that many, always the most.
Shows better.
There they are anyway. Um. Yeah, major nationals features on the site and within two hundred fifty five. Who they went on stream song, but when groundwater, something like that, that's. Our other reason is all other important activities. Obviously boundaries, that's everything about the question. If we don't have any, we should say so. Um, K doesn't count, it really involves suing. I did not study it enough, and I will follow that location system, that range ways to one bridge, so including the dimensions quite forward. Open range stores as weapons, never been sand and trees. Other important features and pitches. Uh, features to be contained. Again, just. It's not. Don't. Here's my, we all have another asking board, and the water close down. Direction, existence surface water. Location dimensions of existence sign. You don't have to show signs that they're going to come off. Uh, location type of all testing exterior lighting. Unless it's lighting is not used. I didn't see any mention in the V two, any coverage of D. Location and any button, usually I just. It's time to jump.
Yeah.
As Q. And they have had it in there, but I'm not sure about language, location sure lands on. All right, moving to eight. Uh, you so, sure proposed and proposed. Finish grade and elevations. Streets of art and names that are then period. You don't have, the gentleman to say that, uh, for AC and the road lights by the leaves. A D is repetition. The way the limits set back. I believe in that the location dimension including heights of urban elevation, ground for elevation for all the further buildings. And use. Uh, yeah, location and dimensions and here is use construction of an active device.
So, like two minutes. And are we, um, I forgot, we stick with Brandon, we do.
You don't have this.
Um.
Well, the next one is location mentioned to use.
Yeah.
You already shown him, you're showing location, those are part of the goal. Location inverse. Dimensions long, both of them using, including that. You're supposed to submit an affidavit and add a lot of slide. That's usually part of the letter from the law. We before recommend. We covered areas of solid waste, you said they want them to be part of the space. Size, location, direction, intensity, elimination of all major outdoor lighting outlets and signs. And some of these may be covered by.
Sure. Yeah, lighting was still working for a good time.
This is still related back to the location backside of all existing proposed catch bases, one range, screen is large. Uh, landscape areas and features including past experience, open space inside, plant area upon. Promises to. Not memory of its own suspected.
I don't think we did provide a schedule of construction as of yet. But that's, I've got to write that one.
It's usually the something. Sometimes. If you're gonna have one, type of world aside, location and some ratio spaces. Same idea for any machinery, one of them likely to generate peaching or elements.
No, just.
Other than.
Welcome back, gentlemen. Yeah, it's for the pumping station. Sure, pumping station, that essentially, it's been out there for the school years and we're going to continue these. Back. Um. Yeah, I think we will, a backup generator, we're gonna put that on the back side.
Um, so showing where it is, I guess. That's what comes with, keep the H for the. I know what we mean. Emergency use on maybe those, like at home, they're ready to go. Both in the final, final, several.
Sure, yeah. Yeah.
Um. It's not surely, S rise, not tight, raw finish, but we can turn it outside of the limits.
Nope.
Yeah, you kind of have to look. P, but it's. Generated on the. And P R, power, and the site is. Sure, you guys staff.
Yeah, most of it's gonna be stacked, so we can put a, we can put together a quick estimate on it.
Uh, obviously, it does have. Cool block. Storm on original plan, I'm describing article, start on section three, B, three, B, four. And west wall, same thing for southern fish. Why it's not flying, because you're not. On second. Tell us Z is a boss, it's a total fan, doesn't fly, because when I was in the watch, I had a great one. Was on weird one. And well, it's that's the boss, you said.
How many facilities we both have. So here, so.
Um. With this particular group. We have three in Connecticut, one in Mass, one that's going up in New Hampshire now with a. Group I used to work for, I have one in Buzzards Bay, and then I've done about fifteen others for them, different parts of the country. That was Keystone Seniors, not of Indianapolis. But. Some of the same investors on this is. What we did on the Connecticut ones and. Yeah.
May just double A is done, the utility plan showing in addition to the wall is why I always work. The location nature of. Too busy to figure out.
Yeah, I think it's a breakup of plans, I think we got it noted pretty well.
I didn't ask for obstruction, so I'm planning plan. Traffic impact analysis, I think that's tied right back in through.
So do you want us to provide an impact analysis for this?
It says you do.
So an actual, an actual traffic report?
Yeah, as out on the, our selling section. We see two, two, six, which I did not. Um.
Would you request, would you request a waiver on that?
Does labor on the last. Finding words of. Asking for.
Is, is that a report of what we feel we're going to be adding to the traffic flow? Or you want an existing traffic flow of this, on the, on Route twenty seven? No, I mean, on Route twenty seven, no.
In addition, what you're adding to.
Can you see these actions on the scale? Something. Still, it's not wrong, so. It's seen. Um, big time, it's not anything last. And the place is. Okay. Uh, written state. That, the written state. That will be his location with typical process, raising profiles of all of those streets and sidewalks.
Oh, typical, I mean, essentially we're copying what's there, like what's in there with storm on it.
Yeah. Well, and.
Yeah.
It's in this, something that you can do on the.
Gotcha.
And then far along the construction grounds with streets, towards water. Sign design. Uh, don't M G G, that has to be the dedication, part of the. Single H eight. Which has written off with the dedication. To this line. Um. So, council, they don't want that self cost. That will always talk to the way of development. And evidence. People read the letter from the bank. But adequate.
They're gonna be up here either tomorrow or Wednesday.
One thing the letters said it was not committed. They said any back. It's got a chicken egg with a back that don't, I say they know until they have.
That's, that's where we are, you got it.
But there's certainly a method technique. So. Have a remat for a month. Prove financial capability of whatever. I'm seeing one hundred and ten. Okay, that's essentially. All right, can I ask one? So yeah, oh, it's over.
They're looking to close. On the, I think they're looking to close by the fifteenth of next month. We have closing scheduled for the ninth right now, because rates go up after the fifteenth of next month. They've gone up once already from what we. Yeah.
So total cost, we'll give you total cost of product investment. Yeah.
Last one there is J J. Assessment of impact of the dog, that is screens. What kind of dog resources? Uh, I've seen this before. Including reviews from the book. I haven't been asked by, we want CNN.
Yeah.
I would expect. I don't know, I don't know what schools built, but.
No, in the, in, we're really not going beyond the extent of where we find, where the. No.
Honestly, you don't know.
The new building in the back is, is, but it's, it's still on the same.
It's on the old land. And going.
Yeah.
It turned out. Cutouts from the.
Yep.
And with the chocolate on the. All right. That is the site, uh, the requirements for. That, that, that. I think considering the importance of the site, even though we all know it. And I'm starting, there's an is option, very interesting. So I think the only real thing was most of that's in the. Is you can have some states that are generally the big four corners of the new world.
Sure.
Or, or whatever works.
Now, what's that stage?
That stage. Uh, you can have that. So if you participate now, we'll, we'll spread the ball, but once we can't spread it.
Yeah, we'll have that, um, we'll have that taken care of by the end of the week.
So. Actually. We.
We've given fifteen of the nine stations.
Who would like to do sidewalk late in the afternoon, we do late in the afternoon, we got two, we have one more. We had three. Do it, we need it out, about Tuesday and turning. You had a preferred time today? Uh, Tuesday, I believe, that's some possibility.
I believe Tuesday was sixteen. Tuesday the sixteenth, I think that can work. For you guys.
Yep.
Uh. What time? Four P M. Just send me a checkbook. Yeah, it was. Four P M on the sixteenth at school.
Yep.
Anything else you want to see besides the new building with three story of that?
They only real expanded.
I mean, except for the infill, which I'm pretty.
They can stand there and say, there's going to be a wall.
Yeah. Looked like the new building was somewhat L shaped. For where the entrance, you said there's going to be evidence. Yeah. So we can just show on the south side. Yeah, you can just help us out, you know, the front part of the building.
Yep.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it's, it's free, it continues a hallway that already exists in the building. So it's okay, we're coming out of these doors and continuing. Yeah.
Yeah. There was stairs, there was stairs, and you come out.
Exactly, this is the existing bump up right here, so pretty.
Yeah, so there's a hallway that runs along the gym. That's right here, coming inside, and then this space is mechanical. So it runs right down alongside that. So it runs right down alongside that.
I believe it's saying, saying with the efficient material plus nine.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah. So are you mostly looking at, um, just written to each one of these, similar to what we've done with A B and? Okay.
For some reason it's not.
Yeah. Gotcha. All right.
Anybody else have a comment?
It's just in building.
Yeah. Under a portion of it.
Do you have any, any more questions?
No. I think we're. I mean, I think we've got, I mean, obviously we didn't address each one of these things, but I think for the more part. We've got answers for every, everything they're talking about, so. Well, we don't wanna do that. But, uh, yeah, so, so public hearing, so. First meeting in September. Okay. We'll be back for the second meeting this month. With all your answers, so that we have to rule to plead, so then go on to the public hearing. Gotcha.
That'd be the first Mondays to fifth. Second Monday. Yep. Yeah. The twelfth. Okay. Yeah.
You'll have to be on the. The report Monday to get. Yeah, so you, yeah, yeah, I understand, or the first Monday.
Yep.
All right, sounds good.
It's just when the bank says, okay, we're gonna close, when are you gonna start spending money?
You're gonna start spending money, he's gonna do the town and shit.
It's, uh.
The process begins.
Yes, yes, it does.
Yeah.
Actually, it will, it'd be, the process begins before it gets started, before you close with the bank.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Pre-application meeting. For an expansion of the map. Store. A and E properties, the reporters. That's all. They're planning a. This will all be out and back, not visible in the road particularly. Um, it's basically expanding, giving him some warehouse. He has a safe on it. Sure, how long? And then he has to move right into. An interior warehouse situation.
Size.
Forty by ninety. Falls of this and building, which is technically, I don't know.
Same.
Same off, yeah. Yeah, he's just literally extending the building back forty feet. And there'll be some new parking in back, uh, the plan was. We use copy. The tax map, there's a property among.
Building concrete is ninety two watt.
Uh, it's actually a little wider than that, it's slightly different, I don't have like dimension. But it was starting. Newer law, which can continue straight when it comes down to the ninety feet. On the McDonald's side. On the McDonald's side, obviously. That is a whole lot. Yeah. This is a lot in the subdivision that was approved. Uh. Reported and approved. Oh, we don't know the exact date. Although they reported subdivision, Frank doesn't have the date, but we signed the plan board signing. I don't know how that looked at, but it was recorded on. On the second of two thousand and six. So. As part of pre-application, I am asking. That we wave all over the, uh. Yeah, I can think of this. The review criteria that were already been covered by the application back in two thousand and six. As far as things like stormwater management. Soil erosion control.
They're not doing any earthworks there, it's just.
Slight amount, some parking in the, in the back again, but not up front. This is employee parking. Out there, there's a. Six spaces of unaccounted for. Fully bars.
Tonight is your re-application.
My, in my pre-application. I do get to ask if we can. Wave or set existing review criteria. Other than a storm man, obviously we'll be soil erosion control and sedimentation plan as part of construction.
We have to come to writing to the board.
Request, yes, sir. With the application. And, uh. Again, the subdivision is two thousand and six, and since I've gone up there, consisting of recent, I will either sign a letter or have new survey. This is a modification, this is not an application, not changing law, this is just.
Who did the survey in two thousand and six?
Well, tip to my associates, they've been bought by, uh. So they go technics. It's a single lot. Or I'll just, what I'll probably do is update the title and make sure it's ones. And they, well, but whether that we've never got, no. So personally. Thank you very much.
Start with yourself for the next meeting.
Who wants to begin ASAP? I'm sorry.
Is there any interest in Burge's circles on this?
I'm gonna have to check, I don't think much. There's probably some, but.
I'm wondering if the.
Cause I think it's paved up.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the, the treatment comes from the fallen behind McDonald's. For that law.
Part of this is I got involved was because the engineer originally designed this from sight lines. Left. I don't work there anymore. I didn't want to get any. Get up, get him on the fun board.
Anybody have anything else for tonight? If not, I make my favorite motion. Except at eight P M on your motion, we adjourn, I'll give a second. All in trade or raise your hands. We are so adjourned that it was, thank you both. Yes, in your name, please.